The meeting to order. Roll call please, Chell.
Evan.
Here.
Caladonia.
Here.
Canisius.
Here.
Genacio.
Here.
Groveland.
Here.
Lester. Lima.
Here.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Here.
North Dantil.
Here.
Nunde.
Here.
Ashen.
Here.
Portage.
Here.
Sparta.
Here.
Springwater. Here. West Sparta. York.
Here. If we would, we have a guest, Chairman. Thank you, Chairman. Our distinguished veteran for today's class is Seaman First Class Quartermaster Alan Austin Wilson Jr. He was born December twenty seventh, nineteen twenty five, in Markhamburg, West Virginia. He served in the United States Coast Guard Reserve from February ninth, nineteen forty three until his honorable discharge on December thirteenth, nineteen forty six. Upon completion of basic training, Alan went to Quartermaster School in Manhattan Beach, New York, where he learned to steer ships and proudly steer these vessels sailing. During the efforts of World War II, Alan's tour duties included landing Navy vessels from Sioux State Marine Michigan, breaking the ice, allowing access to ships to the Mississippi River, garing locks, and clearing boats into the United States. His service stations included Buffalo, Staten Island, Manhattan Beach, Chambers Station, and Freeport, New York. Other duty stations included Cleveland Harbor, Oregon, Ohio, and the Coast Guard Yard in Curtis Bay, Maryland. His vessels included steering the Coast Guard Cutter, the Champerol, and the Abbasco Class Cutter, U.S. CGC Mendota. He was also maneuvering to the Panama Canal when World War II was declared over. For his military service, Alan was awarded World War II American Area Campaign Medal and the victory prize. On a forty-eight hour pass during his military time, Alan married the love of his life, his high school sweetheart, Marian Eva Thompson. They lived in the Caladonia area where he worked as superintendent in construction after his military service. Much of the initial runways and roads at the Rochester International Airport were built by his teams, where he met the great human Ontario, our thirty-first president, Herbert Hoover, who waved his hands in cement at the airport. His retirement now enjoyed being a snowbird in Florida and making many memories of his life before her passing. His hobbies included dabbling in projects, gardening, gardening, and the sweetest finesse item of building homes and repair projects with his four sons before three of their passing. Many in the local community know Alan because of his generous spirit. Over the years, he has given produce away to individuals, the homeless communities, and even some restaurants. He has given to those in need and in less fortunate situations than him suffered. Although today his legs swelling down from time to time, he is still active as much as possible. He's an active bowler, says around one fifty years old, and appreciates groups like the Livingston County Veteran Peer Support Program. He enjoys meeting and spending time with local veterans as he is uplifted as World War II veteran friends. He is often quoted saying, "I'm still walking and talking, and I have lived a good life." He enjoys his prayers before bed each day, being grateful for his life, his wife, his sons, family, and friends, and he is adored greatly by these same family and friends. So, Alan, would you please lead us in the platitudes?
Platitude to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with every feet and justice for all.
And sir, for your service in the United States Coast Guard, our board of supervisors please to present you with a certificate of appreciation. Thank you. We have the minutes or the last regular board meeting on March twenty-second for your consideration. Does anybody have any changes, any more forward at this time? Very none. I'd look for a motion in the second, please.
Move, Schuster.
Second, Davis.
Call of favor.
Aye.
Pose. It's carried. Communications, please, Chell.
Local law five, two thousand twenty-three, was filed by the Department of State on March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Receipt of letter from New York State Agriculture and Markets Commissioner Richard A. Ball, that resolution number two thousand twenty-two, four ninety-two, eight-year review plan it with modifications for the Livingston County Agricultural District Number Three, has been found eligible for districting. Receipt of acknowledgement letter from NISAC Executive Director Stephen Aquario for resolution number two thousand twenty-three, ninety-four. The next conversation with the county will be held on Tuesday, May ninth, two thousand twenty-three, six P.M. at the Ashen Town Hall, forty-seven oh-six Ashen Hill Road, Danville, New York.
Thank you, Chell. Next, we have abstract complaints.
Mr. Chairman, I move this abstract of complaints and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there any questions or discussion on this abstract complaint? Hearing none, I'll give it to Chell.
Evan.
Aye.
Caladonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Genacio.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dantil.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater. Aye. West Sparta. York.
Aye.
Eyes forty-seven seventy-four, absent two eighty, adopted.
Thank you. Next, I have privileges for Congresswoman Chell congratulating veterans who draw the flags. Should we, and you want to move the preferred quick? Should we move the preferred? Yes, entertain a motion in the.
Move, Watcher.
Second, call of favor.
Aye.
Pose. That's carried. You would please, Chell, review the agenda.
Proclaiming the week of April third through the ninth, two thousand twenty-three, is National Public Health Week. Appointing member to the Livingston County Environmental Management Council, Catherine Fish. Appointing member to the Livingston County Soil and Water Conservation District Board of Directors, Gary Galton. Appointing members to the Livingston County Traffic Safety Board, Thomas Doherty, Kathleen O'Hara, Keith Young, Jr., Matthew Nesbit, and George Warden, Jr. Resolution in opposition to New York State Legislative Proposal to Mandate All Local Boards of Elections to Hire Additional Full-Time Election Staff. Appointing members to the Livingston County Land Bank Corporation Board, Daniel Pangrazio, Ian Foyle, William Bacon, Amy Davies, Angela Ellis, William Fuller, and Shannon Hillier.
Thank you, Chell. Ready to discuss it and any of the resolutions in the preferred agenda? Hearing none, I'd look for a motion in the second for bring people.
Wesker.
As all, call of favor.
Aye.
Pose. Carry that. You would please, Chell, if you would.
Evan.
Aye.
Caladonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Genacio.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dantil.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater. Aye. West Sparta. York.
Aye.
Eyes forty-seven seventy-four, absent two eighty, adopted.
Thank you. Go back to privileges of the floor. It gives me a great pleasure to welcome and introduce our Congresswoman Claudia Tenny. She is newly representing Livingston County. Had the opportunity to go with Claudia this morning and a couple of her staff members to some businesses here in Livingston County. We had a nice day for some, had some really informative staffs and appreciate your interest here in the county. We certainly welcome you to stay a few minutes after the meeting concludes. We do have a legislative agenda that we put forward to share with our delegation about initiatives that are very important to residents of Livingston County. Also, question to you briefly, we do have another recap grant into the USDA. We were successful a while back, getting the training to bring high-speed internet to our constituency, basically all places where there's residents or business, all locations. And that's one of our main priorities here to help people in the vicinity, able to chat from home or room from home, or even like work from home. So, thank you for coming here this afternoon and meeting with us. We can, we can.
We're just speaking out.
Oh.
We said, hey.
Well, if we're not, you should.
Yeah, thank you so much, David. Thank you all, and everyone who works with us, Tommy, and really appreciate the trip today, some small businesses, and just how important they are to our communities, especially our farming communities. And just a little bit, I'll take a couple of big things about me and then about this district that's newly formed, New York twenty-four. So, my family roots are, my cousins were farming. My grandfather on the other side decided to leave farming, go to start a business. He opened up a newspaper and also did food business, and he started that in nineteen forty-six. I've worked in it in one capacity or another since I was about fourteen, I think in twenty twelve sixteen. So, it's my first dose of realizing that there's taxes taken happening, but I'm not eligible for six months credit at the time. But I worked in our business, went out to law school, college and law school, and headed back as a lawyer in the law firm, practice, general practice, and well focused on banking and tax law, and did just about everything states divorce, there's a limited name when you're a small law firm, you can do everything. And I eventually left my law firm, ran again in the business, this was a newspaper that I ran in the state of Virginia. And we sold it in two thousand four, which is how I got to N.C. care too, from the Tennessee Valley newspaper, because one of our publishers in our statewide group, and I've been out here before because of Steve. And so, anyway, after that, I never really, once we sold the paper in two thousand four, I never really imagined that I'd ever really be in politics, because I was, I didn't have any politics, I was fifteen years old. And I just got so frustrated with politicians telling me, "Oh, we're lowering your taxes, we're going to, regulations, we're going to make it easier for our farmers," and that wasn't happening in Albany. So, I ran for the state legislature in two thousand ten and was elected for three terms and then ran for Congress and elected in twenty sixteen. I lost in twenty eighteen and then I won again by a hundred and nine votes in twenty twenty, which made me realize that every vote that's counted, and I formed the election integrity caucus, the only caucus of its kind in our federal level, and we are very active in educating voters. We're hoping it will be bipartisan someday, but it's something that I think, a lot of Democrats in New York City have expressed their interest because they're concerned about elections, and we know that typically it's primary, and they have to worry about drawing elections because they're all in. So, got elected again in this newly formed twenty-four and have served on the base of the Constitution, which is supposed to be the most powerful, yeah, in time, so I think people say that because it's the only one that's mentioned in the Constitution, and also it covers about seventy to eighty percent of everything you do in Congress in terms of voting, whatever issue comes before us. And one of the really important issues that's actually coming up is the Farm Bill, which we do every five years, and it's extremely important in this district. And I'll tell you why, because this newly formed New York twenty-four is the largest agricultural district in the Northeast, not just New York, in the Northeast, it is also the largest dairy district in the Northeast. And every part of this twelve-county district is engaged in agriculture in a very strong way and in our driving our counties, along with other small businesses, the American House, the bigger ladies, the kind of territory, so a lot. We also obviously have a lot of great crops, great beef, everything that comes out of this district. So, the Farm Bill is why I all last week, I traveled around the district and did Farm Bill the same years, because I'm a farmer directly, but it's a challenge, met with some today, just on some of the big issues facing down as we all await a New York State budget. We also have a federal budget that will, is not available until October, that's probably the hop when we get the Farm Bill. But there's a lot of things that we hope we can do on a federal level to try to ease some of the payments coming from the state side. And we have a lot of really important issues, and I'm glad to see the initiatives we had here today. We also have a lot of what we help community project grants, those are raised if we can actually help you get resources from the federal government that are already allocated, it's not the money, so we're not adding any money to deficit debt. And so, we want to make sure that we bring those resources to our rural and upstate communities that often get slapped out and forgotten in New York State, not because you're not in the big city area. So, those are some of the things that we have been working on, obviously trying to get the budget done for our side, the Farm Bill. It's technically not due until October, but we would really welcome that budget so that we can continue with the things that we need to do. We have a debt ceiling issue, which I think you've heard about, that's coming up in May. It's not unheard of, but we would like to see a negotiation on some reduced spending, especially on the non-military side, that will help bring down inflation. We'd like to see some concessions on energy. We just passed H.R. One, which is our energy bill on the Republican side, talking about bringing back Americans' energy independence, talking about an all-day vote strategy, not eliminating fossil fuels and natural gas, which have done more to bring down emissions than anything the last five or six years than anything else we've done. Talk about common sense ways that we can inter, intersperse all the different energy resources we have, because we have growing economy, we have growing people whose will. And we just are concerned about the climate agenda coming out of Albany and how that's going to harm our jobs, our farmers, our state economy. So, those are just some of the things that we're working on, a lot of big things, perhaps the parents' bill of rights, we're trying to lead sponsor on tomorrow, help community buck look. We've riding games, the Kentucky consumer, who has denied her title as the best woman swinger in college sports. And we'll be talking in order about the importance of some of the social issues that are impacting us outside of what we do here on a memorial level. But I'd be willing to answer questions, I don't know how much time I have, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you have or think you do sometime in the future. This is Michael from Office Safety Pictures, also Aaron Beltox, who's actually a person to talk with Tommy, and he's also working in our staff, in Victor, just so you know. We have three offices, we have one in Lockport, one in Victor, and one in Oswego. We have the satellite office in Jefferson County, gets a lot of ground, we have to cover a limited amount of resources to hold offices, but we also do mobile office hours, and we go into basically every county, every single month to meet with constituents directly, especially with people that are seniors, people with special needs, our veterans, and making sure that we come to you as much as we can. So, and broadband is going to be really important, not just, not just telecommuting, but telehealth, you're getting to a lot of people who aren't able to get to the doctor and then also some people in rural areas. So, I also have a newsletter, thank you for commenting on my newsletter, I come out with a newsletter every Friday, if you go to tenny.house.gov, we recap what's going on in Washington in a week. I also explain every vote that I take on the floor of the House, and I do it in detail, and that's because I want to make sure our voters are informed, they're truly participating in our self-evidence, which is what our core privilege is as a country and as our Constitution, and to make sure that we make informed votes, and I try to decode Washington, because sometimes it's very deceitful and deceptive, the way bills look, what they sound like, and what's actually happening, so I try to do that for you. I can't help it, it's my background as a former newspaper publisher and also lawyer. I want to make sure that you know exactly what you need and tools you have. And also, some people have said it's a little long, if you don't want to know about something, just don't read that section, we do the. So, but I want you to be as informed as possible, and that is one of our missions in our newspaper, that's our mission, and what you do, I know what you do so hard, it's so hard working local government, you are working very hard, and not as many resources. I know the state legislature, thank you for participating, I know you participated in some of our online meetings and our Zoom meetings about what's happening in the budget and what can happen to our existing county, and Tennessee, all counties are looking at having state resources taken away from town, which is true, you have to raise taxes, and I have the resources that we've earned as a county. So, those are just among the many issues, and I'm just grateful for this opportunity, you're awesome for what you do. I know that you're so close to your residents, you know your communities, you bring that voice to the legislature and speak out, you have the people that represent, and so greatly respect the work that you do and the hard work that you put into this, bringing your personal background, your commitment to county government, and making sure this county operates and knows as good a job as you do. You really do have, you know, a great record as a county, so. I have twelve counties, so I consider that a somewhat, somewhat, and my last district I represented eight, so really a credit to the Department of State. But if anyone has any questions, you know, I'd be happy to answer them, I'm not too shy to answer. I know you guys are shy. Anyone?
With Republicans and Democrats, now we have Republicans and Democrats in here. We all get along great. We might fight at many meetings and stuff, we're offensive. How come down there it's just like World War III? I just don't understand what one is trying to overdo the other when I know I'm Republican and I give you a hundred percent, and I've watched you on TV and the stuff you've done, and I appreciate all you've done, because you've done good.
Well, first of all, let me just say, you can't believe everything you see in the media. So, it isn't World War III, there are people, to be perfectly candid here, which I understand, this problem I have, and I just want to tell you everything is the truth. There are people that's, that are in this job, and I call them performance artists, and we have them on both sides of the aisle, and they like to make non-identity statements for maximum impact, and not with social media, and the ability to donate online, because it brings lots of money by making, you know, ten year remarks, and they think, maybe they're going to go along. We actually do go along rather than you think, and I know, I do, though, we'll say, to your point, I grew up in a family where we were mostly Republicans in the family that tied that with my parents, but my cousins, my relatives, were from all, you know, were Democrats and Republicans, and we used to disagree, and boy, you know, Thanksgiving dinner was often, you know, a kick down, right, and everything, but we all got along at the end, and I think that's something we have to do. And so, I was involved in a commitment to civility in my first term, we only did that as freshman class of Democrats and Republicans, and we agreed to be bipartisan bills, which I always do, to work together, to do social events, to make sure that we're trying to work together, to really meet the needs of our nation, and not, to meet the needs of party necessarily, or just to really make sure that we can find common ground, because if we all agree that the Constitution is a self-governing constitutional republic, and we care about freedom and individual rights, and we should all be able to find the path, maybe we don't agree a hundred percent on how to get there, but we can come up with something like that. So, this year, or actually, second, but last year, I got together with a few of my Republican and Democratic friends who I've worked with, I have good friends on both sides of the aisle, and we came up with a thing called the Reagan on the Hill Club. So, it was based on the idea that Ronald Reagan, when he was president, worked with Tip on the Hill, when he was Speaker of the House, and Ronald Reagan, who's known as a conservative, and Tip on the Hill was known as a liberal, but they got together, and we fought it out in the House of Representatives and on the floor, and then ended in the White House, and they went off and they, and they toasted each other and had a drink together. So, we started the Reagan on the Hill Club, there was only eight Republicans, eight Democrats, just me and the one, joined with another, another liberal side party. It's not for political purposes, it's not to create bills, it's not fundraised, it's purely to get together and try to find where we have common ground and have a little bit of a, of time together outside of, to see that the other side is human. And now, we went from twelve to twelve, and now we're at twenty and twenty, we're waiting for this. So, a lot of people really want to see us work together, and they really do want to see us come up with solutions, because we can do that, and there are ways to do that. I mean, almost every bill I put out, unless it's a district-specific bill, has a bipartisan element to it, and it's important, because if I want to get that bill passed on the floor, I need to have bipartisan input, that means we go out and get the input from our colleagues on the other side, where we can find common ground. But we do often see in the media, you see sometimes, you know, highly polarizing characters like, for example, Nancy Pelosi, or someone like that, or other members on the Republican side, but most of us all actually work well together. And I'll tell you, this Reagan on the Hill group has become such a big thing that we were in Tennessee recently and went to the school, and I think it was discussed at the school, and the high school political science teacher said, can we do like our own group, like can we do a Reagan on the Hill, Tennessee version, and have students that are on both sides of the aisle, come and talk and debate, and understand that we can do that, and have eat each other and communicate. And so, now we're starting this chapter in Oswego County as well, which is in this district. So, we're hoping that this is something that we can, you know, get us to a better place as a country, because we have real enemies that are not in the United States, and they're real, and they're taking advantage of us right now. They see the divisiveness, whether it's for real or not, they see it, and they see us not getting things accomplished, they see us, you know, not really standing up for our country in many ways. And I think a lot of people are recognizing it, you can see, I think, you know, real problems ahead if we don't start solving these problems, and that's one of the ways that we want to do this, because I certainly don't want to be enemies with my, my family members, and I'm not, but, you know, some of them don't want to talk to us, but we drag them into Thanksgiving anyway. Even if they don't want to come, last time I had a nice dinner, they remember we're all friends, so. But I think they are making progress, I'd love to see one in every county in the state of New York, a chapter of the Reagan on the Hill Club. I mean, it would be great to see us all working together, having young people understand they don't know the Reagan on the Hill. And it was, with the note that we did have a time when we did work together, and we did have friendships, and we could disagree and respectfully do that. So, I think that's a real opportunity for us, and I've seen a lot of interest in this. And I travel around, I've been, you know, to every county probably within the last two weeks, multiple times, and I, and I hear that same kind of thing that you're talking about, is let's get together, let's work it out, let's try to find ways that we can find common ground. It's so important on that. I listen to everything in the media, if you watch Fox or MSNBC, whoever, you're going to hear like, it's going to be fever pitch, because you know what, I read a newspaper, it sells, it sells. You know, if you get people all worked up, and you buy a newspaper, they're going to listen to the radio or watch TV, so.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
If we're looking for a lot of support for something, who will be, who's the best contender?
You can just email, send my email, and Michael's here, he's my district director, Michael Salmar, he's doing a great job trying to keep this district going, you know, it's twelve counties, it takes about four and a half, five hours to get one in, but it is tremendous, I mean, you're just saying in part, every time I go to my family, I say, this is my new favorite county, this is my new favorite county, and I can't believe what great work that he's doing, you know, you just hear so much names, it's getting him loose, but I don't see that when I actually meet with businesses, when I meet with legislators, when I meet with governments, I mean, people are really out there working hard, and you realize that what, you know, just how well represented we are, I mean, certainly not everyone's perfect, but it's still a lot of great products. And anytime you need a letter of support, I would say, make sure you contact their office, whether it's for a grant, call us up, we'll do what they call the Congressional Research Service, search, we'll find out if there's grants out there that haven't been tapped in that might fit something that you have. Also, if you have, you know, a famous part of history or famous person, and reading this wonderful gathering, which is honored today, and you want us to do a floor speech on that, or some great part of Livingston County history, you weren't happy to do that as a floor speech, I try to do it as many, I try to take out as much time as I can at the time on the live in the Florida House to recognize our district, and we put it on the map and make sure people know. So, if you have anything, a great veteran to recognize, a great person in history, something wonderfully done. Yesterday, we were just in Wayne County, we did a bicentennial, two hundred years of Wayne County, you know, really amazing ceremony, we'll probably talk about that on the House floor too. And once it goes on the House floor, and I speak about it, it becomes part of the Birmingham Brown, you can find us there, so you can always search it, you can put the pictures behind us there, and it's a way of electronic keeping our district active.
Any other questions?
Not a question, but I, well, I guess, can you comment a little bit? We see in the media all this stuff that's going on in the, in the country with the violence and, and the gun violence and so forth. Can you just comment a little bit on where you stand or where people are standing in with mental health? I think, I think that is something that, one, the media doesn't want to bring out, and two, they, it's, it's a tough topic, and, and I don't care where you go, people don't want to talk about how are we going to, you know, address mental health? And I feel that that is probably a lot of the, the problem that is going on, that they don't address the real problem. So, can you comment on that a little bit?
Yeah, thank you absolutely. Well, I am a strong believer in our Constitution, particularly the Bill of Rights, so I can say that men and rights are extremely important, and I would invite any officers, even before I was in office, to preserve and protect our second amendment rights, and admitted any challenges, you know, you hear the media, you know, they think, I don't know exactly the type of gun it is, and maybe it's a gun, and we know that we've had a lot of mental health problems in our country, and they've been growing, and they seem to be worse, and I think it's even bigger than just, you know, it's a societal issue, we have a lot of children learning that aren't learning that they should be learning in school, they don't learn about civics, they don't learn about our, our, our Constitution, they don't learn about civility, which is why I love the Reagan on the Hill concept. But I think that there is also, you know, this sort of victimhood mentality, and people react to that. But I also, look, we have, there is no problem, I have a problem making sure that someone who's mentally ill does not have access to a dangerous firearm. And we have flaws in place that are violated, and most of these, we can tell that most of these people, whether they had a gun or not, we're going to somehow commit that violence, and a lot of them are illegal gun users. And if you look at, like, just look at, I was an authority when the state had this tax. I, at the time, I represented Greenwich Mountains. One of the oldest, you know, meticulously operating businesses in the state of New York, you know, they were, I'm not a grand, you know, they produce firearms for our military, for self-defense, for sporting, I mean, they're really, and they were vilified by Governor Andrew Cuomo, so that's the state that, in response to the same, sadly, terrible school shooting, wild guess, for Buffalo shooting, we've had numerous shootings. No matter how many laws we pass, we don't seem to be able to stop these people, because they come up with another way to commit the violence. And we, you know, I could cite out all of the stats, you know, all probably know them, but we've had so many terrible things happen in this country, from people killing nearly 2,000 people in the Bronx, kind of on planes, to, you know, stabbing people that can't get access to guns, finding a way. And unfortunately, we don't talk about the fact that all of that violence is about, we're not talking about the underlying problem, but why are these people doing this? And they're going to find a way to commit that violence, whether it's, you know, running people over in cars, you know, crashing buildings in planes, stabbing people, you know, look at 350 people died this year in the United States from being hit or whatever, baseball at. More people are killed that way than even with firearms. So it's a tough, I think we really need to get down to understand what is causing, what are the root causes, instead of just going to the top line and trying to say, oh, we're just going to ban all the guns. And look, certainly, I, I support, you know, reasonable amount of safety that we can have in making sure that certainly people don't get access to guns for people that can't. We do all competitions on that in that way, but I mean, look, those awful gun owners almost never commit any, really, 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 I mean, if you ever go to a gun range, God loves you, and you go to a gun range, guess what? They're the safest people, they're very, you can see someone that's an analyst coming out on a gun range, and they don't be able to, that gun properly, and everyone that's illegal on the, oh, you need to go to training. So I think that we just have to, back to education, common sense, and there are, there do seem to be an awful lot of mental health issues of wide variety, and I think some of those things, I mean, our school districts are already overwhelmed with so many problems, but I think, you know, going back to some core basics, let's not argue in school, I think it's like, we get in our business, we get in the right full set, and then have a high school, even a college, for some things. So we have, we have other issues on that, and I think it's deeper than just getting home out, I mean, that's, that's usually the major reaction. Thank you for your question. If you can always reach out and send a question, or contact their office, if you have a business and you're interested, I'd love to do that too. Or if you have one.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, we have some resolutions that are going to require a special vote, compliments.
Mrs. Walker, authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contracts for the Livingston County Center for Nursing and Rehabilitation, University of Rochester Medical faculty group, and RTG Medical ELSI.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Is there any questions or discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, the roll please, Michelle.
Evan, Kelladonia, Canisius, Genesio, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anzo, Nande, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, West Sparta, York. Eyes 4774 and absent 280, adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contracts for the Livingston County Department of Health, Bonadillo and Company LLP, Brims LLC Doing Businesses Beacon Solutions Group, Casa Trinity Inc., Fitness Machine Technicians, Corey Lidenfrost, PhD, Livonia Central School District, Leah G. Madison, Teresa Miskel, New York State ARC, Inc., Genesee Livingston Orleans Wyoming Counties Chapter Doing Businesses Glow, and Wyoming Properties LLC.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Are there any questions or concerns on any of these contracts? Hearing none, the roll please, Michelle.
Evan, Kelladonia, Canisius, Genesio, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anzo, Nande, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, West Sparta, York. Eyes 4774, absent 280, adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following grant award contract for the Livingston County Department of Health, National Association of County and City Health Officials.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Are there any questions or concerns on this resolution? Hearing none, the roll please, Michelle.
Evan, Kelladonia, Canisius, Genesio, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anzo, Nande, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, West Sparta, York. Eyes 4774, absent 280, adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contracts for the Livingston County Office of Workforce Development, ARC Glow, Genesee Finger Lakes Regional Planning Council, Genesee County, Livingston County Workforce Development, Orleans County, and Wyoming County Community Action.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Are there any questions or concerns on any of these contracts? Hearing none, the roll please, Michelle.
Evan, Kelladonia, Canisius, Genesio, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anzo, Nande, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, West Sparta, York. Eyes 4774, absent 280, adopted. Mr. Demming, authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contract for the Livingston County Central Services Department, CPL.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Are there any questions or concerns on this contract? Hearing none, the roll please, Michelle.
Evan, Kelladonia, Canisius, Genesio, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anzo, Nande, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, West Sparta, York. Eyes 4774, absent 280, adopted. Authorizing a professional services contract for a countywide preventative maintenance program, Emergency Power Systems LLC.
Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Are there any concerns on this resolution? Hearing none, the roll please, Michelle.
Evan, Kelladonia, Canisius, Genesio, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anzo, Nande, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, West Sparta, York. Eyes 4774, absent 280, adopted. Authorizing the Livingston County clerk to sign an agreement with the New York State Throughway Authority.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Any questions or concerns on entering into this agreement? Hearing none, the roll please, Michelle.
Evan, Kelladonia, Canisius, Genesio, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anzo, Nande, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, West Sparta, York. Eyes 4774, absent 280, adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contracts for the Livingston County Historian, Geograph Inc., Media Transfer Service LLC, and New York State Industries for the State.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, the roll please, Michelle.
Evan, Kelladonia, Canisius, Genesio, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anzo, Nande, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, West Sparta, York. Eyes 4774, absent 280, adopted. Authorizing the implementation and supplemental agreement number four with the New York State Department of Transportation for preliminary engineering design, right-of-way incidentals, and right-of-way acquisition, construction and construction inspection phases, and funding in the first instance 100% of the federal aid and state aid, Marchesele program aid, eligible costs of a transportation federal aid project, and appropriating funds therefore. County Road 62, Johnson Hill Road, Highway Rehabilitation Project, towns of Evan and Livonia, PIN 4LV 0.02.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, the roll please, Michelle.
Evan, Kelladonia, Canisius, Genesio, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anzo, Nande, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, West Sparta, York. Eyes 4774, absent 280, adopted. Authorizing a professional services contract for AV upgrades at the Emergency Operations Center, Solutions Inc.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Are there any concerns on this contract? Hearing none, the roll please, Michelle.
Evan, Kelladonia, Canisius, Genesio, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anzo, Nande, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, West Sparta, York. Eyes 4774, absent 280, adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contract for the Livingston County Planning Department, ARC Glow.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Are there any concerns or questions on this resolution? Hearing none, the roll please, Michelle.
Evan, Kelladonia, Canisius, Genesio, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anzo, Nande, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, West Sparta, York. Eyes 4774, absent 280, adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following grant award contract for the Livingston County Probation Department, New York State Division of Criminal Justice Services.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Are there any questions or concerns on this resolution? Hearing none, the roll please, Michelle.
Evan, Kelladonia, Canisius, Genesio, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anzo, Nande, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, West Sparta, York. Eyes 4774, absent 280, adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following grant, following contract for Livingston County Probation Department, Agara Language Services LLC.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Are there any concerns on this resolution? Hearing none, the roll please, Michelle.
Evan, Kelladonia, Canisius, Genesio, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anzo, Nande, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, West Sparta, York. Eyes 4774, absent 280, adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contract for the Livingston County Public Defender's Office, New York State Office of Indigenous Legal Services.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Are there any concerns on this resolution? Hearing none, the roll please, Michelle.
Evan, Kelladonia, Canisius, Genesio, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anzo, Nande, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, West Sparta, York. Eyes 4774, absent 280, adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contract for the Livingston County Sheriff's Office, Frontier Communications.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Are there any concerns on this contract? Hearing none, the roll please, Michelle.
Evan, Kelladonia, Canisius, Genesio, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anzo, Nande, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, West Sparta, York. Eyes 4774, absent 280, adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following grant contract for the Livingston County Sheriff's Office, New York State Division of Criminal Justice Services.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Are there any concerns on this resolution? Hearing none, the roll please, Michelle.
Evan, Kelladonia, Canisius, Genesio, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anzo, Nande, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, West Sparta, York. Eyes 4774, absent 280, adopted. Mr. Knapp, authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contract for Livingston County, Cardyman Catering and Rental.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, the roll please, Michelle.
Evan, Kelladonia, Canisius, Genesio, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anzo, Nande, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, West Sparta, York. Eyes 4774, absent 280, adopted. Amending the 2023 Livingston County Budget, County Historian and Probation.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, the roll please, Michelle.
Evan, Kelladonia, Canisius, Genesio, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anzo, Nande, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, West Sparta, York. Eyes 4774, absent 280, adopted. Authorizing transfer of funds, contingency, there are two.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Are there any questions or concerns on this transfer of funds? Hearing none, the roll please, Michelle.
Evan, Kelladonia, Canisius, Genesio, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anzo, Nande, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, West Sparta, York. Eyes 4774, absent 280, adopted. Requesting the New York State Senate and the New York State Assembly to authorize Livingston County to impose an additional rate of sales and compensating use taxes. This is a two-thirds vote.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Is there any discussion or questions on this resolution?
Just one comment, these resolution titles often look confusing when we're doing these home rules. We're not requesting additional rate increase beyond what we presently have, but it's the current rate that we have at 8% that we have to ask for renewal periodically.
Thank you. Is there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, the roll please, Michelle.
Evan, Kelladonia, Canisius, Genesio, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anzo, Nande, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, West Sparta, York. Eyes 3678, absent 206, adopted. Amending the 2023 Livingston County Salary Schedule, Livingston County Center for Nursing and Rehabilitation, Central Services, and Information and Technology Services.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, the roll please, Michelle.
Evan, Kelladonia, Canisius, Genesio, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anzo, Nande, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, West Sparta, York. Eyes 4774, absent 280, adopted. Amending a portion of Resolution Number 2022/423, adopting the 2023 salaries schedule, Amending a portion of Resolution Number 2022/423, adopting the 2023 Salary Schedule.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Are there any concerns on this resolution?
Evan, Kellidonia, Canisius, Genesee, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Lubonya, Mount Morris, North Anzo, Nande, Ashen, Portage, Sparda, Springwater, West Sparda, York. Eyes 4774, absent 280, adopted. Ratifying tentative collective bargaining agreement with the New York State Nurses Association and authorizing execution of a collective bargaining agreement.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Is there any discussion on this resolution?
Evan, Kellidonia, Canisius, Genesee, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Lubonya, Mount Morris, North Anzo, Nande, Ashen, Portage, Sparda, Springwater, West Sparda, York. Eyes 4774, absent 280, adopted. Authorization to submit a farmland protection planning grant application to the New York State Department of Agriculture and Markets.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Is there any questions or discussion on this application?
Evan, Kellidonia, Canisius, Genesee, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Lubonya, Mount Morris, North Anzo, Nande, Ashen, Portage, Sparda, Springwater, West Sparda, York. Eyes 4774, absent 280, adopted. Workforce Development Board has, from Barilla, America, and she represents business and her term expires on March 22nd, 2025.
Yeah, just a couple. You'll see some stuff come out from our press office. April, in addition to your taxes, there's also National County Government Month. I don't think those two things are necessarily connected, but we do a lot of messaging around the importance of county services, programs, initiatives as part of the NACO, kind of NACO branded National County Government Month. Sales tax, we're, first quarter returns are in as of yesterday, so we're up double-digit percentages versus the same time period last year. So, that's a good thing for our general revenues. The state budget is late, as you probably all saw. That impacts us because, sort of embedded in all the fighting is the EF map, a few other things that are kind of floating around that impact us from a financial perspective. So, we don't know where all of that stands at this point in time. And then last but not least, on the next Ways and Means Agenda, we'll have the annual capital project transfers to fund the CIP projects that were previously indicated as needing funded in the CX.
Congrats, Joe.
I get one for.